Behind there and stuff, it's.
Monday, July tenth, twenty seventeen, regular session at Animal Social City Council. City Hall Council Chambers. One point oh roll call.
Rich.
Here.
Bill?
Here.
John?
Here.
Rod?
Here.
Cody?
Here.
Betty?
Here.
Two point oh motion to approve the minutes from the following meeting, June twenty-sixth, twenty seventeen, regular council meeting.
No to approve.
First by Bill.
Second.
Second by Rich. Any? Additions or corrections or? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed? Carried. Public hearings, none. Four point oh presentations, none. Five point oh proclamations, none. Council action items, six point oh community betterment, six point one discussion and possible action on labor offense height restriction for Macoketa Valley R E C.
I do not have a problem with waiving that restriction for two oh seven East Cedar Street. I do however have a problem with waiving that restriction and fencing any part of the property between Ford and Huber. Which is the last paragraph on that recommendation from planning and zoning.
Yeah, the businesses that butt up for that property would not be happy to have a fence up there. Is there any way we can get whatever he's proposing, number one, in writing, obviously? Have him exactly lay out his time what he's doing and have someone check it?
Before it's done.
I mean.
So this all went and was discussed amongst planning and zoning? Tammy, I guess, maybe you have some insight on it? Like they've already, it's been before them.
Correct.
This is their recommendation?
Yes.
Except to us, we'll approve it or not.
Well, it says here the planning and zoning does not recommend amendment of fence regulations at this time, rather to recommend the city council waive the fence regula- regulation.
Exactly. They don't want to change the regulations. They want us to do this on a one at a time.
Yeah, per basis.
Yeah, that's the one for right at R E C, but not the one over between Ford and Huber. I mean, that's, what was their reasons, I wonder, for wanting it?
There's a motion by Dearborn to recommend the city council waive the fence regulations for the property owned by Macoketa Valley Electric at two oh seven East Cedar Street, as well as the property located between Ford and Huber Streets. I'm gonna say I'll go along with the fence waiving at two oh seven East Cedar Street, but absolutely no fence between Ford and Huber Streets. That's supposed to be public space.
Now.
At some point.
This would be. This would be a waiver of their.
Height restriction.
Height restriction.
That's correct.
So.
Six foot's the normal.
It doesn't keep them from putting a fence in at all.
It doesn't, no.
So they could put a six foot fence in, yeah?
Have at her. If that's what he wants to do and throw me his nose at us, that's fine.
So what's the difference between six and what they're asking?
Ordinance.
There's no reason for a fence in the first place, except he's chasing the semis away.
Wait, are we talking about?
His property is prerogative.
Since he got the property between Huber and Davis, magically he got setbacks so that he could put his new building on their property and make it a campus in that block. He no longer then needed the property over, yes, they still own it, no longer needed the property over behind Starlighters. But they went and posted it, put flags around it, tried to keep vehicles out of it. Of course, you see, there's not much of that tape left anymore. And now I think this is his way of saying, it's my property, I'm gonna put a fence up. If he wants to put a fence up, have at her, put a six foot fence up. I am not gonna propose that they put a seven foot fence with barbed wire between Huber and Ford. If he'd want to give it back to the city so we could improve it at some point, Tyler got money in his budget ever to put a skate park there as Jim proposed, or make it green space, or improve it, make it a parking lot. Not in favor of fencing it.
With a six foot, a three foot, or a seven foot fence?
Well, I'm happy to see it back on the tax rule myself.
Well, I'm wondering where, because if you read the letter from Jim, it basically said, is all it talks about is the Kula property that they purchased and wanting to put in the seven foot fence. They don't, he does not mention the property between Davis and or Ford and what, Huber. So where did that come into play in the zoning meeting that they discussed it?
I'm guessing it was verbal, because that's the only place it shows up.
But there's no, but there's, but there's nobody here to relate that.
That would be my guess. No. Exactly.
Correct.
Exactly.
So we don't know what was said in that meeting.
Correct.
We only know that we're able to approve or disprove.
And there's been too, I feel there's been too many verbal agreements with Macoketa Valley and very a lot of times the city's left not getting totally what was promised to them. Or last minute changes after approval's been made. In this instance, just because it's stating that the recommendation with city approval from planning and zoning is they have to fence both areas, I'm just, my opinion is just one on East Cedar Street only.
And I'll make that a motion that we approve the recommendation to waive the fence regulation for Macoketa Valley Electric Cooperative at two oh seven East Cedar Street to match the existing fence on their property there only at this time.
I would second that.
First Tyler. Have, uh, has the Park Board, Adco, and Macoketa Valley been, continued to pursue the skate board, uh, racket?
We've looked into it, um, price wise, it was not, we kind of figured out wasn't feasible for our budget right now. But that's the main thing, the price is just a lot higher for what they were wanting.
So is it, is it ongoing, or was it shelved?
I'm guessing it shelved. After talking with Doug, it sounds like they might have shelved it.
And if you were gonna put a skate park there, I would think about a three foot fence is all you'd want.
Because the options he had given us were skate park, a green space, or fencing it in.
Well, I, I do remember when we first gave the city property and purchase of the Starlighter, uh, when the building went to its current location, was erected. Then that area between Huber and Ford was, it was, I look at as promised, a green space. So I'm just, I'm wondering, you know, obviously no one here can answer, but if that's still being pursued, or if that was pulled
I can only.
Unbeknownst to us?
I can only tell you third hand that, um, the R E C found out how much cement is under that rock surface there. And in some cases, because of the buildings they had there, there's probably three or four feet of foundation underground. And that, I'm told is one of the reasons that they decided not to try to excavate it and make it into green space. I don't know that for a fact. That would make sense though, for that feed mill that used to stand there.
Well, and I got notification from surrounding businesses there. Brett Sealy at the bowling alley was one. He was livid. You gave that away when it butts up to my property? I'd have paid for that part of the alley. I'd have bought it. And there was never an option to the other business owners. We also have half of that block of Main Street who is suffering and businesses trying to get open. I know Marion Browns and Goody's and Animal Social Floral. Both are doing everything they can to rebuild their business from the fire. The last thing we need to do to the current businesses is start fencing in that area and creating that hole back. I mean, I don't know if you guys have been back there or not, but my idea of green space and theirs is must be two different things. There's a big weed pile right now.
I don't agree with the fence, but as Cody said though, it's his property now, so how can you stop it, even like you said it?
You can't.
Not approve the six foot.
But we can say we're not approving the
Seven foot.
Seven foot with a barbed wire.
But he could still.
Sure he can.
Our R E C could.
You darn right he could.
Yeah, so we don't, when you say we put up a fence for these businesses, it's not us doing it, it's him doing it. So it's not us.
Right, but we, correct. But we don't need to approve the recommendation
No, we don't.
Of a seven foot with the barbed wire. I mean.
He can operate within the ordinance.
He could still, he could still put up a six foot fence.
Absolutely he can, but I'm saying.
That's about the fourth time we've acknowledged that.
You gotta be very, you gotta clarify and have exact, because if you don't, Jim Lozan just doesn't, Jim Lozan does. He has a history of that.
Well, the, the property two oh seven East Cedar, uh, when I drove up there, it, it, it's clear where the fence would lay. You know, there was talk with the Huber Ford property there of giving adjacent property owners some of that back. That's, was talked from Jim and R E C. So I, I, I don't have a clear picture of where the fencing on that property would lay, which I have, that is some of the reserve I have of approving.
Well, it will still have to lay within his property.
But if he's going, if he's going to be giving.
He has to fence a seven foot off the property.
Yeah, but if he's gonna be giving.
Unless you have an agreement with your adjoining property owner.
Or you know where the property line is by survey.
That's, that's how they have to find their property pins.
So he can put that on his property line, as long as he knows where the survey line is.
And I agree with all that. I just want it to be on the record and where it publicly said that I am not in favor of the recommendation by the planning and zoning to allow both places. He can put a fence up anywhere he wants. But just for the record, Betty Weimer's saying she's not in favor of a fence being put there. He can do what he wants, but we need clarification that we're only talking about the one property for the seven foot fence with the barbed wire.
And that's, that's what your motion stated.
I would just like to have a clear picture of where the fence on Ford and Huber would go if, if we approved it. Again, he can operate within the lines of the ordinance, there's nothing we can do. I, I wish someone from the zoning or Jim were here to answer a couple of questions I have. Obviously they're not, so we need to make a decision, I guess.
I'm gonna first and second. You ready to vote? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed?
No.
Carried. Six point two discussion and possible action on the reappointment of the Library Board of Trustees members Barb Fleyce, Pam Benson, and Dennis Hendricks.
Move to approve.
Second. First by Bill, second by Rod.
I have a question though. I see that Bonnie Lozan resigned. Are we gonna have to fill that in as well?
Isn't that an issue that the board, their board will have to take care of?
I'm, I'm just curious.
They, they will have to make a recommendation to the council.
But it's an opening on their board?
Correct. They weren't in a position to have done all that research.
Okay.
We'll be talking about that on next quarter.
Yeah, that's just waiting, I was waiting to see if there was another one coming. Okay, thank you.
And just one step further on that. I know that the library board has always tried to stay gender biased. Are you looking to replace with another female, or?
Yes, we have to, um, because we have currently five men on our board. We are looking to replace with another, um, female from within city limits.
Okay. That's good to know, thanks.
So we're always appreciative of recommendations.
That's good.
We have a good board.
Ready to vote? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed? Carried. Six point three discussion and possible action approving performance contract with Brazilian, two wins for seven twenty-seven seventeen concert and a park for parks and rec department.
Move to approve.
First by Bill.
Second.
Second by Rod. Any discussion?
I hope it's fun.
All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Carried. Seven point oh public safety. Seven point one motion to approve the renewal of beer and liquor license, none. Seven point two discussion and possible action on third reading of ordinance. Amending animal protection and control ordinance, chapter fifty-five of the city code that require animals off premises to be on leash.
Move to approve.
Second.
By Bill, second by Rich.
I have one comment, or objection, I guess, just for clarification and also for the public. Um, in the event people see dogs at large, is it you, Bob, they call the police department? Is that correct?
Yeah. So, so, if you, if that's what you're bringing up now, there are some things I'd like to say about that. We had a pit bull running loose downtown. Um, that we picked up. People, uh, the, uh, folks downtown were concerned about a pit bull running loose. It seemed to be fairly friendly. Um, we did pick it up. We took it up to the animal welfare in Monticello. They refused to take the dog.
Because?
Because animosa out of many communities in the county does not have a contract with animal welfare. I didn't know anything about any contract, but okay, that's fine.
That's fixable.
Well, that's, that's kind of you people's job, not necessarily mine. Um, however, the problem I have with that is they related to me that it would cost fifty dollars per dog to be dropped off. Um, I asked, do we get that back when the owner comes and claims the dog? No. However, when I talked to the sheriff's office, they are charged twenty-five dollars per dog, and they get every bit of their twenty-five dollars back when the owner comes and claims the dog. Or a new owner adopts the dog, then they get their money back. So this is something you guys need to be aware of, that apparently there's a little bit of a.
Is it because they have a contract? Is that why they're?
I don't know. I don't know. But see, the only people in the county that has a contract would be the sheriff's office. Because the sheriff's office takes care of every other town. Monticello has their own vet clinic they take, they, they take it to, so they don't even take it to there in the first place. I'm just saying that questions needs to be asked when you're approached about this.
She, she, one of the people on that board, I can't remember her name, came to us and asked us if we would be supportive of their venture if they got it up and running. And at that time, this board said, yes, we would be. That's the last we heard about anything, so I don't, I didn't know there was even supposed to be a contract, and I don't know if Al even knew that.
This is the first time I was made aware of any contract. Dale wasn't aware of the sheriff's office having a contract, but I talked to Greg and he said, we do have one.
So how does it work? My dog's running at large. You pick it up and take it. Do I never have a fine, or have to pay a fee, or
Well.
I have to pay to get the dog out?
Uh, under normal circumstances, there's, there's, uh, there, it has, supposed to be in the past, a twenty-five dollar pickup fee. Now, we've talked about this in the past, and the problem with it is, is we carry a dog in a squad car. Quite often, these animals get carsick and they puke, defecate, urine, uh, in the backseat, and we're expected to carry human beings back there also. Um, I can see a lawsuit happening from that. Now, from what I understand, the sheriff's office says that those people there from the welfare league will come down and pick it up as long as the animal is either contained or tied up. Um, I think that's a good way of going, you know? If people call in a loose dog or something, then it needs to be confined or, or tied up, and then they will come down and pick it up.
So who goes and gets this dog? In the event when Nancy's walking on Main Street and there is a dog, obviously aggressive, and who's she called? Called the police?
If the dog's aggressive, we respond.
Okay, let's say whether or not the dog is aggressive. I have kids that are afraid to go out in the yard, 'cause somebody's yard, dog is out in my yard. Who do I call?
We will try to confine the dog, but if, if the dog runs from us and we can't catch it, we won't, uh, we shouldn't call the welfare league. Um, let me give an example. We had an, uh, an elderly gentleman this morning, um, that was chased down by a dog and bit, pretty badly. Um, because the kid that was taking the dog for a walk, was it a boxer? Okay, a boxer, and it literally drug the kid with it almost. Um, the, the kid lost control of the leash. It bit the elderly gentleman, and, uh, I believe bit somebody else, but Travis was the third person to get bit, by, bit by that dog today. Fortunately, it didn't tear his skin, but it grabbed onto the fatty part of his hand and, and bit him there. So we did take it to the vet clinic for the required amount of, uh, hold, because the dog was not up on its rabies shots, was not up on its other shots that's required in the city. Um, and then generally, when, if they want, we are going to file the proper paperwork to have that dog removed from the city limits. It's a vicious animal. And that's the second that we've got kind of currently going right now, or pending, to have dogs removed from the city limits. Um, so that one is, hopefully will be gone. Um, that's kind of where we're at on that type of situation. A vicious animal, we absolutely, we'll, we, we will respond to. But three years ago, Bill? I can't remember. About three years ago, that the council basics, basically said, a dog running loose, you will not pick it up. We don't have the money for it.
And, and that's where I was gonna go with that. The other part of the problem that Bob has is there's no money in the budget. We have taken that money away from him. Uh, when you did have, it was only about two hundred dollars, which in this case would only be four dogs. That, take that up, yeah, would be used by February fifteen.
Well, I wonder what this contract reads with the animal welfare that if.
And why there's a difference in money?
Maybe we could. Yeah, yeah, there's some money exchanged, and maybe they can pick up the slack on, on what we don't have. We don't have time, you know? I'd rather you guys weren't running around chasing dogs all afternoon.
Well, probably fifty percent of the time, I've only got one officer working, so I really don't want to send that one officer up to Monticello for
Right.
thirty, forty-five minutes, something like this, and be out of town, uh, for taking an animal up there. You know, it's different if we're going to an emergency and, uh, dire emergency and, and backing up the county or responding to an accident or something like this, but.
I want this passed. I want this enforced, and I want this remedied, and we need to have follow through. We need to know exactly what's gonna happen, what the steps are gonna be, who's gonna be called, who's gonna come, what's gonna be done.
Right, but you gotta remember, I don't have any money in the budget for it either.
I understand.
What, who does the county, who does the county use? Do they have a dog catcher?
Uh, they did have, but from what I understand now, uh, the welfare people, uh, animal welfare, come down in the county to pick it up, whatever town that they're in.
As long as it's confined or chained?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Correct.
All right. I think that's what we're gonna have to explore is not only budget, but who's gonna do that? If they're gonna do that, that's fine. That's, that's one thing.
Yeah.
The other part of that is if they're not going to, if we're, then we're gonna have to figure out, you know, we've talked about.
Where, what, in the meantime?
Well, if, if the county's got a contract, we need to sit down, negotiate a contract with them.
I agree.
And iron out all of those details, which we're not gonna get done tonight.
No.
But we need to, we need to have a, a little conference with them, and whether or not they'll come down and present, so we can ask the questions and get it set up.
Can, in Al's absence, can you find out or, um, find out what that's gonna take place?
Maybe have them at our next meeting?
I was informed there was supposed to be a representative here tonight.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Yeah, enforcement's always been hard on the dogs. I mean, it goes back twelve years that I've been on council, almost.
I get it, but something has, we gotta figure it out.
Called vote, your honor.
Next, a willing vote.
Rich?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rod?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Eight point oh public works, none. Nine point oh finance, none. Ten point oh city administrators report. That's where you come in, Travis.
All right, it's been a little while since I had to visit with you folks, but a little nuisance update, uh, kind of a hot topic going on now is gonna be long grass. Uh, those complaints have been kind of been coming in, just, uh, verbally getting flagged down alongside the road type thing. Go and address it, usually with the door knock or a quick phone call. It usually gets addressed within four to eight hours. Been pretty minor, uh, enforcement on the long grass side of things. Uh, junk properties and junk in the properties, that has actually slowed down, I believe. Um, I don't know if they're doing a better job hiding it or actually getting rid of it. Um, I do encourage you folks to go out, look around town, if you do see some, uh, to let me know, but I am not seeing nearly as many as I have when I first started this endeavor. Uh, the Boots's property, that was brought up early on in this project, I do believe there's improvements there. They're starting kind of in the middle, working their way out, but I do believe that they are making good progress there. Um, along with the long grass and properties of that nature, shrubs and landscaping plants are becoming an issue in the town. Uh, I'm currently working with Al to see if there's an ordinance that we have that can, uh, enforce shrubbery to be trimmed and maintained. I have not found one, and I haven't had a chance to visit with him, and he hasn't gotten back to me on. If he knows of any ordinance that can allow shrubbery to be maintained, there are several properties throughout town that, they have big bushes, kind of along the pet, the, their porch area, that have just kind of grown out of control. They're not a weed or a grass, so I don't know what that falls under in terms of maintenance. Um, in terms of municipal infractions throughout the city, I currently have issued three. One has been dismissed due to property cleanup the day before the court hearing was supposed to take place. Uh, he actually did a wonderful job with that. Currently two active, one is for, uh, a large tree that's been down on the property for two years, like Al said, when that storm went through here. And one for unsanitary living conditions due to animals, so. Those court dates are, the tree one is coming up here in the end of this month, and the sanitary conditions actually is Wednesday, so should hopefully get some good input there, but. Any questions?
Great job, Travis.
Do we still have the forms available at City Hall?
Yes.
Are they available anywhere else? Are they available online?
Our office has them, and if somebody comes up with a complaint, we usually hand that to them. Uh, some people don't want to fill it out, they just wanna
Tell you?
Tell me what's fine.
We can put them on the website?
I just didn't know if that was a way.
I think that'd be a good idea, if you don't mind.
Information to people.
So.
Cool. Thank you, Travis.
Travis, you mentioned that, uh, you're not seeing as many nuisance properties as.
Junk nuisance properties.
But you, you are seeing some? There are some that exist?
The law, yeah, there's, there's a few, like this, the tree, the tree issue, there's another property with a large tree that is still wait to be, waiting to be cut up on North William Street. It's properties of that sort, but the just the general junk in the yards.
Less any of the nuisances that are work in progress? Or you've initiated contact? Is there, is there any other ones out there that you're seeing that we have not began initiation process?
There are two properties on the north side of town that, uh, they actually have cut the yard, but it still falls under the, that shrubbery and landscaping.
We're just not sure what direction to go with that?
Yeah, that's, that's kind of the big issue is, you know, how do, how do we enforce trimming up shrubbery when it's not grass and it's not a weed, so I don't know where that falls under in the realm, and I, I've spent some time looking through our ordinance of many different, you know, levels, and I, I personally can't find anything, so if there's any direction I can give.
Well, does, does any of that shrubbery block a sidewalk? Cause I know.
Well, I
I know if you go up past the courthouse, there's one on the side that's blocking part of the sidewalk, which to me would fall into a category that you could proceed to have them trim it up.
There's the House of Park Avenue and High Street right on the corner there, right in front of the front steps. It's not, it's not uh, blocking any sidewalks, not uh, blocking any view. It's not a safety hazard at all. It's just, it's an eyesore, but we have no way to enforce trimming it up, kind of tidying that aspect of the property. The grass is maintained within our ordinance. Uh, the weeds are maintained within our ordinance, but the shrubbery really kind of brings the the view of that property down, and I don't know what that falls under at this point, so, but I am working with Al on that to see if we can't find something.
We need to be careful how far we take this.
I would agree.
That that may be a topic that the council will have to decide.
Okay.
I'm all in favor of if it's blocking the sidewalk or a corner stop sign, something like that.
And that's already covered under uh.
It is.
Yeah.
And the reason I bring this up is because that is actually one of the complaints I have received is uh
From other people?
Is overgrown shrubs. That is, that's verbiage in the citizen complaint I received is overgrown shrubs. So it's not something I'm I'm, as I see that complaint, I do see others in town, but I I don't know how to proceed with that, so that that is one area of contention that I have right now, so.
You're right, very sensitive area.
I would stand down on that until Al gets back.
Fair enough. Nope.
And we decide whether we wanna, as a council.
Do some research and see if there's anybody else that does anything, maybe another community, but.
Sure.
I can't remember ever doing that in Cedar Rapids.
I
When you called something in down there, it went to the street department when I was on.
Okay.
But never talked about shrubs.
And that's.
Maybe something we don't want to.
I
Yeah, as a group, maybe that's something we don't want to get in there. As Cody said, you can be too.
I do appreciate your forwardward thinking, though, the tidiness and.
And it's tough if you have neighbors calling complaining about it.
Well, that's, and you know, try to do the best you can by everybody, but
Yeah.
Unfortunately, if there's no backbone to do something, there's not a lot I can do, so.
Yeah.
But if you folks have any questions about me, just let me know.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Travis.
Eleven point oh mayor and council reports on boards and commissions.
You know, Dale and I went to landfill meeting last Wednesday, I guess it was. They went ahead with purchasing their called the unloader to load all their stuff to get it shipped out, and then they're gonna go with Cascade on the tires. What about a fourth of what they was paying before, so they can save considerable amount of money if the guy can keep it away, and it sounded like it was. They're gonna try it, so if they can save that kind of money, why, it sounds good what they're doing. Guess that's it for. The E M A N, uh, nine one one, on the nine one one. We are working on FAA compliance for tower markings, either through F F A, FAA approved aviation orange and white or lighting, white during the day, red at night. Planning and zoning at the county level wasn't interested in correcting the ordinance. So Gary is taking it to the Board of Supervisors tomorrow to see if we can get them to do that. And at the point, comes up with Amber Tower. If we have to paint that Amber Tower aviation orange and white with all of Kettleson's RVs within. Yes.
The drift.
Is just scary. So uh, we are hoping we can go with the lighted assemblies, white during the daytime, red at night, and if a red one fails, then the white comes on at a reduced wattage. So it's still blinking, it's just not blinking that real bright, so it doesn't become a nuisance to people in the community or around it. So that is what we're working on currently. Other, most of the other stuff that we've worked on is just month in and month out maintenance of different kinds of things. Monticello really doesn't concern us. Uh, Gary's also working on readdressing almost all of the properties from Bodensteiners out toward the New Cardes, because they have three different names, Business one fifty-one, South Main Street, and something else, all on the same stretch of road. And so he's been working on that. It's a problem that's been there basically since I started going to those meetings. When John Hatchell was the mayor, he assigned me to go, and they were talking about it then, and people just never did anything, so I applaud Gary for doing that. He's moving forward on fixing one problem at a time, and that's what we have to do. That's all I have.
Better together is coming out of the box in this Friday.
Fourteen.
At St. Pellet's.
Twelve point oh public with business with the council on items not on the agenda.
Do you want to address the council, Jim, at all?
No, I wonder what you get on six one. I apologize for being late.
Nope, that's no problem. We voted that you can put your extended fence up around, um.
Two oh seven.
Cedar Street. And we had noticed that there was a thing in here that, um, that planning and zoning said that they recommended also the street between Huber and Ford. We did not approve that.
Is there a reason?
Because, um, is that not supposed to be green space?
Is that an output?
Supposed to be green space? When you address the council, when you address the council and it was given to R E C, was that so you could make green space there? I'd have to go back and look at my minutes to see what.
Approve it, that's where the warehouse was going to go.
Right, and then you changed the warehouse and was gonna put green space there.
That was one of our options.
Okay, well, that's what was told the city council, so if that is changed.
So it's generally acknowledged, Jim, that you can put any kind of fence you want there, but not a seven foot fence with barbed wire on top of it.
Okay.
I mean, it's your property. It was just to take into consideration all the businesses around there.
What difference would it make to the businesses, whether it's a six or a seven foot fence?
That when they are not happy about it, we can all say we didn't approve the additional fence, but it's his property. He can do what he wants.
Is is your plan, Jim, to fence off that entire area?
I I don't, I honestly don't know. My board will be meeting next Friday to make that decision. I've given them three options. I don't know which one they'll choose.
I I guess from my standpoint, I'd like to have a better idea of R E C's plan, you know, the entire area is gonna be fenced.
That's one.
Smaller, you know, a scaled down area of it. I know at one time, you know, the skateboard park was being pursued, and and also I believe at that same park meeting that you attended, uh, there was, it was presented that part of that alleyway or the uh railroad right of way area could be given back to some of the uh, adjacent property owners. So I guess I'm just looking for a little bit more clearer picture of what the R E C is actually looking to do.
And at this point, I don't, I don't have.
I don't think. But you know, maybe a couple of weeks. It's a different, different ballgame. Uh, reading through, I guess, I don't want to jump in here. Uh, reading through some of the notations from the various uh, departments. One thing that jumped out at me is the summer reading program, that we have over four hundred youth of all ages participating or signed up. That, that's a significant number to me, maybe not to you.
Oh, we're always excited when we have a time to get signed up, so.
Must, obviously you have something good going on there that you got that that participation.
Free ice cream.
Well.
Oh, you have to read in order to get an ice cream.
Free stuff attracts adults too, so.
Maybe Rod would sign up.
Nice, that's nice. Nice to see. Uh, Tyler, any any new news?
I guess, well, I looked up what it would cost for, I wanna say the distribution price for that. Um, I was able to find the ten horse three phase P R X C and K, um, which is what it would be.
What are we, what are we talking about, Tyler?
Uh, this would be the pump. Um, eight thousand four ninety-eight. Um, so I don't feel it was too off base for this company. Um, that's what I was able to come up with right now.
That's the pump for the slide?
Uh, for the pool.
You've been bathing it for how many?
Got babyed it for fifteen years.
Nancy.
Nancy Schaefer, eight oh three North Division Court. I would just like to express my disappointment in what I consider lack of professionalism by a couple of council members in the discussion of the fencing. So I'm glad the meeting is taped. Thank you.
I am too. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Ready for thirteen?
Thirteen point oh adjournment.
Come on.
Second.
First by Bill, second by Rod. All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Carry.